Okay, it is seven o'clock. Time to call this meeting orderably stamped with the blood of the leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Taylor from like leaders.
Dear Lord, I pray for the hearts of your people as we gather in a I pray that we be united in our titles and our responsibilities. I pray that we humble ourselves before you so that you met us up. Let us be elevated in spirits when we're in a heart that year for you other than hearts that year and their status and this will well. I thank you for your love. Thank you for signing us. You're fine with this.
All our phones are for people called in. Will you please mute your phone or computer? Tell us your current speech. All right. Thank you very much.
Is that?
Yes. Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the last regular meeting? First confirm.
Now.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. The auditor slash treasurer's report.
I got the treasurer. Got the treasurer's report for January 2021. Out of that total funds, the bump end is $2,688,986.22. Out of that, we have $1,713,008.62 in a secondary or money market account. Still waiting on CDs. Rates are still lower than with the returning account. So that's in there. Now, next page is press affiliation. Everything matches up for January. And that should be it.
Taylor, do you have something?
I do. I do. I've only got electronic copies yesterday. I didn't have to open them. Okay. Is anybody able to send Scott an electronic version? I can help you guys.
Yep.
Or I can go have a.
Taylor, you ended up sending it to the old email.
Yeah.
Yeah, send it to the. Right?
I saw it on my old one.
Do you want to get the message as well? I think I've got the original. Well, I tried to do electronic today and it saved paper. It went to the new one. I got it on the one, but I don't have it.
Please forgive me. Want you to start up.
That's what we're trying to do.
Well, you don't have it on.
No, I didn't get the memo about that.
Oh. All right. You want me to? Can I go sit at the sky? Yeah, you can. Can you do the other report first? Is there?
Hey, how come you didn't do that?
Yeah, good. It's a little.
Here, I'll do it.
Also, yours are audio. He needs it on Facebook. That's all. He doesn't have. It's Mike's room. Family's mic. If anyone wants to start something else, Tony, I'll be right back.
Okay. Mayor's court report, roll call.
Okay, so mayor's court. We didn't have a report today because her computer, her printer is down. So we should have that tomorrow. And I'll submit that at our next council meeting. We have any assistance to call out?
Nothing other than the audio is terrible. So the only thing we can do about that is everyone speak up.
Speaking to him.
Yeah, okay.
If they're working.
I just sent it to the.
I just plugged in his thing as well, so it should be. Yank it up here.
Business and organizational comment. Okay. Is Mr. Roll on the line with us? Very roll.
I'm on the. I'm on the call and so is my daughter, Sarah. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Why don't you tell us a little bit about your new business that you you're starting up? Kind of give us an update where you're at and when you plan on opening.
Yeah, sure. I'm just going to do a brief introduction and then I'm going to let my daughter, Sarah, take over. She's director of sales and marketing. And, you know, she's been spearheading a lot of the social media and marketing material that we've been putting out there, kind of getting ready for our grand opening in April. So, I mean, we're we're super excited about the business. You know, we've gotten loads of compliments from various people in and around Nelsonville. We've actually had a couple of write-ups already from various newspapers and magazines. Hopefully, you know, everybody on council has had a chance to see how the the building is evolving and it's going to continue to evolve. We love the mural that our muralist, Eric Lawrence, has put on the side of the building, kind of a big welcome to Nelsonville. You know, highlighting the Hocking Valley Scenic Train, the locomotive number three and kind of it going through Old Man's Cave and Conchel's Hollow. So with that being said, I want to turn it over to Sarah because she's playing a very important role in the company and she's already done a lot of work. And I want to give her an opportunity to shine in front of you guys. Sarah, are you there?
Hello, this is Sarah speaking. Can you guys hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Sorry, I muted it so you didn't get all the background noise.
Okay, no problem. Um, yeah, so like my dad said, um, my main role in the company is sales and marketing. So if you see a lot of our social media posts and the advertising with that, I have a lot to do with that. I've been talking to a lot of the radio stations in the local area. Like my dad said, we've been in a couple magazines. And we're excited that we're kind of making a noise in town just because of the mural and us being a, you know, new and exciting business to the area. You know, we're down at the office every day from eight to six and we see anywhere between five to 20 visitors a day. And that's exciting for us because, you know, that gives us hope that our business will do well and people are excited that we're opening. But it also gives us hope that we're going to hopefully attract more people into Nelsonville. With that, we plan on opening, doing a soft opening in March, the middle of March, and then a grand opening in April. Unfortunately, right now, we're kind of waiting on our vendors and getting inventory in. I've talked to over hundreds of sales reps across the United States, across our region. And, you know, they have explained that the outdoor industry has boomed since the pandemic and that people have kind of fallen back in love with being outdoors. And we hope that, you know, as the experts in outdoor fun, that we can show people that it's great to be outside and this is the place where you should take advantage of that, not just in Hocking Hills, but all of southeast Ohio. Because there's more to Hocking Hills. There's Wayne National Forest. There's Athens. There's other state parks that don't get as much spotlight as Hocking Hills. And we're here to kind of to help create that light on the rest of the southeast Ohio that there's a lot more to us than just Hocking Hills.
Yeah, and we've got a lot of activities planned for not only the store. You know, I think when I first talked about our plans with the planning commission, we talked about adventure pro outdoors as being a sporting goods store, you know, specializing in canoeing, kayaking, hiking, camping, biking, just about any activity that you can do outdoors. We want to have some kind of involvement, you know, in and around it. You've probably already seen as you drive by adventure pro, you know, we've already boosted our canoe and kayak inventory. We probably more than doubled it, probably even tripled it. You know, we plan on getting a, you know, a lot more tubes so that we just, you know, can have a lot more visitors, you know, in and around Nelsonville. And now, you know, we're we're exploring, you know, guided ATV tours on Wayne National Forest. So we're working with Wayne National Forest to get approval to be the only guided service on Wayne National Forest. We've got an inventory of side-by-sides and quads that we'll trailer up to the two possible locations with trailheads that we could take customers out from. And Sarah, do you want to add anything else to some of the activities that we're going to be doing?
Along with the, you know, the rental activities, like the ATVs and the canoe and kayak livery, we've been in the process of renovating one of the pole barns on the property to make it a flea and farmer's market. So we'll have 60 units where people from the local area can come to sell, you know, antiques, clothing, crafts, food, whatever they would like. We plan on having indoor sales and then outdoor sales. But we're still in the process of remodeling that. And then we're also planning on doing pallet sales along with that. That will be hosted either one day a week or several days a week. So hopefully attracting more people in our community to get out and come see the local area. And then for Murray's Landing Community Kayak Livery, normally we're known for hosting several events each year, the mega tube float on the Hocking River. But this year, we plan on hosting several more events. I have a team of rental activities managers who are going to help me plan more events to bring the locals together and hopefully get, you know, kids more involved in outdoor activities and then just the locals in general. Do you have anything else to add? Add?
Well, I I happen to listen in on one of the council meetings where Alfonso was talking about what he's doing in town with the bakery. And we're also working with him as well to help promote, you know, his catering business, not only with the Hocking Valley Scenic Train, but also with our cabin rentals. And somewhere in the future, we'll we'll also have a, you know, a deli that we're going to open as well. And Alfonso's graciously offered to help support us in that venture as well.
Um, yeah, and going off of going off of that, you know, this this, we've always been huge advocates of supporting local businesses. When we have cabin rental guests come in, you know, we say, go to Rapsody, go to Mom and Mimi. We give our customers a list of our favorites in the local area. We we post it all online. We give them hard copies when they arrive. But this year, our team is hopefully implementing a discount book to get more local businesses involved because we do see several thousand customers a year. And if other local businesses, not, you know, not Walmart or your big companies, we want like the small mom and pop shop to get involved because we want their names to get out. We're going to try to get those businesses on board so their names can be seen to all the thousands of customers that we see, even more than they see them already.
All right. Well, thank you, guys. We appreciate you guys joining us this evening, kind of telling us a little bit more about your business and, you know, give us an update on when you're going to anticipate your opening. And we look forward to you guys. And we want to be successful, obviously. So, you know, we look forward to hearing more from you and hopefully you keep back in some ways. So thank you very much for joining us tonight.
Yeah, if anybody has any questions, be happy to take a few right now.
Anybody have any questions? No questions, Mr. Roll. We appreciate everything that you have done so far. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, we we look forward to when we have the grand opening, inviting all of council down to, you know, take a tour of the, you know, the finished product. But anybody's welcome at any time to pop down and, you know, see the progress along the way.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Guys, all have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Taylor, you ready?
I'm ready.
All right. Good evening, council and those watching online. Sorry for the original hiccup. I tried to do all paperless, although I knew Carla wanted paper, so I got one for her. And I had just a small hiccup with that at first. So this is the auditor's report for January 2021. And credit card review, you guys have the credit card purchases on paper because they would not scan over today. So that's two technical issues for the day that I have. Scott, you can flip to the next page for me. So on page, first page of the auditor's report, how did our fund balances change in January? You'll see on the reports on the next page, there are many large costs in the city in January due to annual bills that come due, large debt payments in the general street, water, sewer funds. And you'll see their balance has changed accordingly. The only main expense in capital improvement was the Wood Lane Bridge project, our portion of the match. And then we spent about $69,000, $69.05 exactly more than we brought in in January. The next page is just the report of purchases. I'm sorry, the expenditures and revenues. Usually I can see at the bottom, but I can't see. Can you hide that box for me, Scott? I'm sorry. Oh, it's too small for me. So anyway, 602,369 in revenue, 671,000 expenditures for a total fund balance currently of 2.463 million, less than what we started the year with, but certainly more than we started last year with. And you'll notice the rec fund is currently negative. That is due to a low balance. We have some expenditures in the early part of the year and they make up for it, property taxes and the full opening. On the next page, you'll see updated healthy fund balances. So this is now the new updated healthy statuses based off 2021 budget. And then the according, the respective balances for those funds. So you will see currently most of the funds under healthy status, water fund just under, capital is over, and sewer currently under. On the next page, you'll see expenses broken down for January by department. I'm trying to get you guys more information as we go along, but with more easily digestible ways of talking about it. So here's top to bottom. You'll see in January, the top two expenditures by department are water and sewer debt, followed by what you'd expect, police, fires, sewer plant, water plant, my office, street, city hall, and so forth. On the next page, you'll just see that information broken out by pie chart. The only reason this is useful for everybody is just the visualization. You will see the blue and orange triangles. I'm sorry, this is small type for me and I'm 29 years old. The blue triangle is the water plant loan payment. So this is expense by type of expense. The orange triangle is salary and wages, followed by sewer plant project expense. And the yellow sliver at the bottom left is medical insurance. So just to give you an idea of all of our expenditures in January, where do they go in any given month? Next up, that should just be those. Oh, this is revenues. I'm sorry. Here's our revenues for January. The top is reimbursement for the sewer plant project, 242,000. And a half roughly, general fund, water rent, sewer rent, capital improvement, gas tax, and then we start getting the pretty smaller numbers. Economic development, in case anybody ever wonders, is from individuals like other folks who are on the phone. So if they own a bed breakfast or hotel in town, the bed tax on the economic development. And this is just a pie chart of that same information. You'll see of most of the revenues, the yellow triangle is our sewer plant reimbursements, and then the green at the bottom is general fund followed by water rents.
Taylor?
Yes, ma'am.
On the economic development around 2000, do you know like what that's divided by? Is that like one business, five businesses, ten businesses?
Yeah, so so that would have, so January's economic development would have been lodging bed tax for quarter four 2020. And that would make up folks who filed in January, probably just three or four of them. So we probably have about seven or eight bed breakfasts in town who are compliant or cabin rentals, et cetera, et cetera, Airbnb. We don't actually have a hotel yet, but I know Hocking's working on theirs. So that would be about four or five. So December would have had the rest. Some folks file early.
Thank you.
Yep. So final items, just a quick thing. The state audit is finished. It will be filed this week, hopefully. That is the routine audit and is for 2019. The investigation is also rapidly finishing. We continue a, or the sentencing everyone's looking forward to is continued to March 17, 1:30 PM. Utility bills are all being reviewed one by one for accuracy. This will continue for at least a couple of months. And then everyone in town watching at home and also in the room will be receiving orange tax reminders that say, just as a reminder to pay your income tax. Last year, we sent these out through letters. We're sending postcards instead at about half the cost, about 60% of the cost. So be able to look out for those.
Did the state extend that time? They didn't another COVID bill. Did the state extend the time on?
Taxes?
Yeah.
Not yet. I don't know if that's in the works or not. And I just want to let folks know at home, we are comparing against state tax records for the first time. That doesn't mean you have to give it to us. That means we already got them and we will get them for 2020. If you don't file or if you file differently than what you're telling the state, we are going to know. So please be honest with your taxes. Don't cause me too much work this year. And then we try to get the trash one. Now, go with the ordinance. You want me to wait for the ordinance or? Okay. So I guess after that, it's just everyone can find this online at the website and can see everything online at the checkbook program itemized in real time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'm motion to accept the treasurer and the auditor's report.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Now, yes.
Yes.
Now, yes.
Okay. And committee discussions. We have a double meetings tomorrow night, correct?
Oh, yeah. So we have planning and development tomorrow night at seven, followed by.
Parks and Rec at eight. So we'll be discussing that, you know, ticket building, getting that taken down.
And Parks and Rec. And in planning and development, we are going to be talking about camping and trash, in particular trash receptacles for people who live in areas where they can't get like their trash cans off because they live on a hill and have no driveway or sidewalk or whatever, and start talking about a solution for those people to be in compliance with what's voted.
Okay. You have any plans to talk about CCP friendly tomorrow night?
I don't know. Can you do it?
What do you? What do you know? What do you? I just want to be able to. Anything else?
Uh.
Oh, we have a judiciary meeting. We have a judiciary meeting on Thursday at five o'clock.
Again, neverly there is council rules.
Protocol.
Protocol, protocol.
Gotcha. Okay. Anything else?
Mr. President, I would like to remind everybody that my deadline is Wednesday afternoon. What do you guys have any names around?
Yeah, so if we have anything there on Thursday, we'll form out it for the next meeting.
Thursday is this week is following Thursday, next week is.
Oh, Thursday.
And the Thursday of the week before, but.
Yeah. Uh, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Barber, fire department update?
I'm ready for the meeting. I'm going ahead and try to expedite some of the process in my my meeting. I sent the fire department hearing report to the email address of all council. So you guys can actually access it. Go through that at your leisure and then morning, I'll put hearing report, fire department on fire department stage. We're going to use the hearing report as the update. And I'm trying to expedite the scheduled, but the council meeting, not drag it out. It's going to take a while. Go on your screen after screen. Send that to all council personnel.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Aaron. Okay. Second reading, ordinance zero eight dash 21.
Ordinance authorized to the city manager to execute commercial and residential rubbish, refuse, and recycle collection contracts with Athens Hocking Recycling Centers Incorporated for the three-year period from April 1st, 2021 to March 31st, 2024. Whereas Athens Hocking Recycling Centers Incorporated submitted the lowest investment for commercial and residential rubbish, refuse, and recycle collection to the city of Nelsonville, now therefore being ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville at the county of Ohio's fall. The city manager is authorized to execute a three-year commercial and residential rubbish, refuse, and recycle collection contract with Athens Hocking Recycling Centers Incorporated from April 1st, 2021 to March 31st, 2024. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect as the earliest available by law. Really acted by council on the second reading, 22nd day of February, 2024.
Okay. Any council discussion?
Did you read just writing on it?
Your second reading?
This is second reading.
Yeah.
Did the first reading have an emergency clause on it?
No.
On the. It is, there's 30 days. I'm just wondering if we do need to suspend the rules because if the emergency clause was read Friday night.
No, it wasn't.
It wasn't? That was my question.
Before I read it.
Okay.
Bruce Dorlos? Anything he wants to add in? Bruce, you got anything?
Sorry, that couldn't. I, the audio is still a little, little hard for me to hear. I got my headphones in. What was the question?
Is there anything you want to add to that or is it just enough you'll know or?
Yeah, just, just real briefly, you know, we're going to do everything we can to get the communications out. I talked to the city manager and the auditor today, you know, some final details to hammer out after this, after this reading. You know, we want to get this communications out. We want to make a smooth transition. I think we have that all lined. Uh, I think we have that all lined out with some staging areas in the city for dumpsters and carts. Um, we're, we're gonna, um, do our best to meet those timelines on, on April first, um, to get everybody, uh, communicated with. But, uh, we're gonna work directly and, and closely with the city, uh, to get those communications out to not only the residents, but the businesses. I will personally be going around and talking to all the businesses to make sure their needs are met and we, uh, make a smooth transition. Council member Jones had asked a couple of questions about commercial recycling. We'll try to discuss all those different, um, issues and details of the service with each individual business. And then we're gonna, you know, we want to, uh, as much help from the city of Nelsonville to, to reach out and communicate to the residents about this transition. Um, and we'll work as closely as we can and, and meet these deadlines to get in there April first and get the services started.
Bruce, if, uh, customers have a toter right now, do they need to call you to let you know that they have a toter and you'll have to bring them one?
Well, that's something we would, we've been working out with, with, with Mr. Frank and Mr. Sabington today, how we're gonna get those communications out and how we're gonna collect that information.
So who are we gonna call, like, if we want?
There's still some... I, I think that question still has yet to be answered, depending on, you know, how the billing goes and how we get these communications out. Um, you know, what phone number, who's gonna call, that kind of thing. Uh, the other unanswered question on, in my mind is, um, uh, back when Southern Ohio had, um, Blue Benz out there and Rumkey took over the contract, um, whose ownership of those carts, are those still gonna remain? Or do, do Rumkey own those, or do the residents own those? You know, what's the fate of those? Because that, that factors into the totals for the number of carts that we're going to have to get and, and distribute.
So would it be all right for us to call and say that we have a, a, a tote and we would like one? Me and my wife both struggle with trash cans, but the toter makes it really easy with the big wheels to just...
What we were talking about earlier is if, uh, if we are going to do the billing, uh, city, then, uh, it would make more sense for the customer, like yourself, to contact the city and ask that question versus drag them into the middle, uh, but whatever you...
It doesn't matter. I just say wanting people that have the toters and basically older people count on not having to drag cans out.
Sure. And that definitely has to, uh, so the correspondence he's talking about definitely addresses that. We also have the list of who has a toter now. And, uh, we're using that as well.
All right. If you have that list, it'd be easy to just make sure that gets done.
Yes, sir.
Should we bring up practices?
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just gonna say too, the other thing, if Bruce can hear me, the other thing that Bruce and I, Scott and I talked about today was just that, uh, besides hammering out that answer, um, part of that would be dependent on whether the city's doing billing. Uh, so council's gonna have, I mean, unless I'm wrong, council's gonna have to instruct us on that. And then council will also have to set the sanitation rates, um, which can't be exactly the contract rate as far as, uh, the base minimum because of, basically, not everyone pays their bills. The city has to pay to send the bill. Um, so, uh, basically, to be able to send out these correspondences to the customer so they can choose which services they would like, there's gonna need to be a price attached. So with the time constraints we're on, somehow council's gonna have to tell us if the city doing the billing and also what price are we putting on these correspondences that have to go out pretty much. Bruce, Bruce's goal was this week. Um, I'm hopeful that's possible. If it's not possible, it's gonna be...
Well, it would have, it would have to be this week because the same, the charter section four-eleven says the state set the rate, you can't do it in an emergency either. So you're gonna have to get it, we're gonna have to get it done before March the first. Do readings before March the first. I mean, if the same charter section says that you can't have an emergency for a franchise, also says you can't set the rate on an emergency. So... Probably gonna have to have two special meetings to be able to get that done by we're in a still thirty days worth to go in effect.
Can you say that? Okay, shall we, yeah, point of order, uh, vote on the ordinance? And then do all the soft speaking stuff?
Yes, absolutely. Uh, I forget, go ahead, ask your word.
Yeah.
Push to adult?
Right ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Order. Zero nine dash two-one. Someone introduce it.
On to the check. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute change order number four for phase one of the Nelsonville Regional Sewer Collection System and declaring an emergency. Whereas the purpose of this change order is to make adjustments to the final contract price based on installation of a second flood line extension which will allow the operators to use the new pump station line extensions for recycling of the floods from the plant so they can abandon the existing influence pump station. Whereas they are, there are sufficient contingency funds in the Nelsonville City contract of the phase one of the Nelsonville Regional Collection System to fund these change orders with the current finance. Now therefore being ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the city manager is authorized to execute change order number four for phase one of the Nelsonville Regional Sewer Collection System in the amount of twenty-one thousand, four hundred fourteen dollars and fifteen cents. In accordance with activity A and act two and incorporated hearing I read. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency remit for students to a high revised code seven thirty-one point thirty because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary so that change orders can be implemented as soon as possible during construction projects. And this ordinance shall be in full force for second-class construction. Willing acted by council on first reading of the extension of the rule day, uh, the twenty-second day of February, two thousand twenty-one.
Any council discussion on that, ma'am? Push to spin.
Boo?
Yes.
Now? Yeah.
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Nothing?
Yes.
Yeah.
If you move on?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Grant? Yeah.
Yes. Uh, resolution twenty-two forty.
Honored to... The resolution designating, designating depositors for active money for deposit and public depositors pursuant to the higher revised code chapter one thirty-five and declaring an emergency. Whereas March seventh, two thousand twenty-one is the day to designate the financial institutions to be public depositors for the active money of this city. And this council finds knows that certain applications were given as required by law. And whereas the application hearing after described for all that had been received and the applied present money to be deposited in them as follows. People's Bank Nelsonville, Ohio, maximum amount, two million dollars. Nelsonville Home Savings Bank, maximum, maximum amount, four thousand five hundred dollars.
Michael Bubbs? Has left the conference.
It's four million five hundred thousand. Okay. Park National Bank Nelsonville, Ohio, maximum amount, four hundred...
Forty million.
Amount, forty million. Whereas this council finding securities and securities tendered by these financial institutions are proper. Be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the active deposits and public money in the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, are hereby awarded in accordance with the higher revised code one thirty-five point zero forty as follows. Number one, first twenty-five thousand to People's Bank Nelsonville, Ohio, on the basis of operating needs of the city of Nelsonville. Two, the balance of active money may be deposited in any of the following banks. People's Bank Nelsonville, Ohio, Nelsonville Home Savings Bank Nelsonville, Ohio, and Park National, based on criteria established by the treasurer of the city of Nelsonville, but shall not exceed the amount specified in each bank's application. This ordinance will be passed after emergency remit on first reading pursuant to the higher revised code, section seven thirty-one point thirty because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary to allow the timely awarding of the depository region. Willing acted by council on first reading of the extension of the rule this twenty-second day of February, two thousand twenty-one.
Any council discussion with that?
Yeah. Um, we knew it was March seventh. Why did we wait for, had to be an emergency?
There was some confusion. The ads went out. Michael didn't leave. It's why I asked for from the financial institution. So in that, I had communicated the, and copy the, what the financial... I would have assumed financial assistance do this every five minutes, thank you. They got, they didn't support it.
So we just didn't know?
Right, I can't do it without the appropriate...
Yeah, they already submit, uh, things. They got it back, you know, like the same day, so.
They didn't get it back until first.
Okay.
Anyone else? Bruce? Back up.
Sure. Matt?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Now, please?
Yes.
Oh.
And I'll...
Okay.
Yeah. Thanks.
Grant? Yeah. Mr. Boo?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, I might add one more. The reason the applications are specific, we have to get them back. It's just the bank required, but collateral report just covers a few things. So Park National, one forty million dollars, they gotta set aside forty million dollars. Cover that. They're wrong. That's why the special one.
Motion to adult? Say it.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Grant? Yeah. Mr. Boo?
Yes.
Dan? Yeah.
Yes. Uh, off to the city manager's report?
Wait, should we go back and circle back to the crash issues? Um, the settings, the fee setting?
We should send this to committee on...
So we don't have time to send it to committee. It's always, here, it will take a long time to have to have you on.
If you, if you do it, committee, why don't look maybe you're gonna do it in, uh, finance, utility, I, I don't know. It's kind of a combination of...
We'll be looking for it.
Finance. The other meeting, uh, today tomorrow night.
I think utility committee already agreed, as long as, if the city does it, as long as the city doesn't exceed the price of what the crash holler... As we were applying with it. That, we already agreed to that, correct, Dan?
Yep.
Correct, Tony?
Yep.
So long as the price didn't exceed what the crash holler was gonna, right? As we agreed that it was, it was fine. So there would have to be...
I'll kind of...
There would have to be, you know, legislation to get it done. But that was, we've already, we've already met on it and we've already decided that as long as the city doesn't exceed the price of the crash holler in billing, that we're, we're fine with the city doing the billing.
So we could, we could do, if I understand you correctly, then we could...
Finance committee could do the work, or we could do the work, whatever.
No, what I'm saying is the quote that was given and that, you know, we saw, public saw, the city can bill and we can charge that amount and we're fine, so.
Correct. That's what the, you, you tell the committee said, as long as they didn't exceed what the crash holler was charging.
Is that correct, Taylor? I, I just think because the charter says council sets all rates, that I'm not allowed to charge somebody till council authorized.
Thursday, Thursday, too late.
I don't know if you, I don't know if you need a committee, but I think you still need the legislation.
So, so Athens County, or Athens talking was generous enough to credit a buck sixty on their trash contract for us going to billing. So if we stayed under a buck sixty, it would be more than sufficient.
It would actually could be cheaper. Yeah, what I'm saying is that we could, we could, without a lot of haggling, we could, we could hit that, but have that legislation.
What do you suggest, Taylor? How much extra if the city did the billing?
My suggestion is to leave it at the dollar sixty. Because I think that's, there's operational plans in years future, uh, that administration has.
And all that money will go into a proprietary fund. So on the second year, if we wanted to adjust the rate, we could. If you had plenty of money in the fund by the second year, we could adjust the rate.
You, you could adjust the rate at any time, correct? But, and yes, council, I, my biggest suggestion is council sets up a proprietary fund called the sanitation fund so that I can drop that money in, which would also require legislation.
Need that done by when?
March, month. Before I could, yeah.
It's gonna take special meeting.
Well, the proprietary fund, the financial side, I could just get done before we start collecting money, so.
Probably April.
Yeah. So it could be at least several more weeks on that.
Well, that could actually go through maybe two, two readings of emergency.
The, uh, the rate, the...
Finance could actually be...
The rate issue was different. I, I don't, I mean, I'll let the attorney solve it, but it sounded like the rate issue needed more strict readings to get passed in time, right?
Yeah, yeah. I just can do it all at one time.
So we can't do it under emergency, our, you have to have two readings. And we have to have that done by March first.
Because it's very Monday.
And...
Well, couldn't we suspend it? We just can't put the emergency on it.
I don't know without looking at the charters.
It just says, the, the charter just says you can't set a rate for a utility or grant a franchise on an emergency clause. So we could do, we could suspend it, uh, we could have one meeting, suspend. We just can't have the emergency clause. So we need to have one meeting before March first.
Right?
I don't have the charters from April.
It's four-eleven, if somebody wants to get it for him.
I got it.
Yeah, chart.
Oh, you guys. Never mind all my tabs. I guess what I'm wondering is like, can we, we craft it now? And do it in this, but we can't.
Yeah. The only language in here about, uh, franchises is for fixing rates for public facilities, something. Some of the paths of emergency. So, yeah, if, uh, previous suspension, anything that one. Let's, I would say just do a special meeting next Monday, Monday.
Last March first, didn't it?
What day is Monday night?
March first.
Monday, March first?
Yeah.
It'll have to be before then.
No, it could be March first. There's thirty-one days in, uh, in March.
You need a proprietary fund ordinance and, uh, and rate ordinance?
We need to, uh, Taylor wants the sanitation fund created, that would be a separate ordinance. The rate and then the agreement that the city's gonna do the billing, what I'm hearing. What's the, what's the rate? Is this a panel fee for the rate? So that's total rate? What is it, one sixty for what?
It's twelve.
Well, we, we could get the list of rates. It's on the, it's...
Okay.
For some...
And for the bid that Athens Hocking made, for instance, they, they bid twelve fifty a month for residential trash.
And it would just be, yeah, setting the rates for...
Setting the rates, the same as what Hocking Athens said, as if they were gonna do the billing. Correct, Taylor?
I, that was your guy's suggestion, I think that's...
And we're gonna do that both commercial and residential?
Yes. It's up to you guys.
I'm fine with it, but I just wanted to know if we was doing residential or commercial or residential.
Break them up.
Gary, if you look at that, make sure that that.
The, you're gonna be locked in for, for years.
Yeah.
You're saying we can't adjust them?
Once you sign a contract, I mean, once we sign the contract, we, we can, contract, we, we can do the billing. Unless they, unless they genuinely agree where.
We're stuck with their rates, we're saying.
We could lower our rates.
We could lower our rates, right?
Oh, you can, I'm not talking about the rate, I'm just saying you're, you're stuck with doing billing.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, 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 we're stuck with it, yeah.
Okay, we should make a motion, because that's, so there's actually council.
Well, if, if council's in, basically in agreement with that, I can just do the ordinance.
Okay.
Um, we can, uh, like, you wanna wait until Monday to do it, or?
Well, you need a second for you to come Monday, right, so we do need to have.
Yeah, we can do a suspension of the rule. Monday's the more logical.
So I'll make a motion to bring them, bring them ordinance as we discussed with Gary and Monday.
Right. Yes.
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 Yes. Mr. Scott Frank, floor is yours.
All right, I'm not yelling at anybody, I'm just talking loud so everybody can hear. Um, lots of complaints on the sound again. Uh, I actually looked earlier today, what it would take, it would take a, for a room this size, with noise cancelling, to not hear, uh, pen clicks or paper shuffling, everything else, it's about twenty-nine hundred dollars, so pretty expensive for one this big. So, uh, if you are interested, I would happily order one, but we would have to talk finance, labor to replenish the IT fund, so, uh, the second thing is, I'm just gonna bounce on trash some more, make sure we belabor the point really good. Uh, the trap, the whole time discussed during committee was, uh, and the way we advertised it to all the vendors was, starting this contract, trash will be picked up, uh, on the curb, no more alley pickup. And, uh, that's part of the discussion that, uh, Ms. Jones was talking about. I believe right now, we only have five people that are, uh, that we know are handicap folks that cannot take their trash can around to the front of the house. So if you are one of those folks and you fall into that, uh, category, we, uh, contact code, uh, seven five three thirteen fourteen, and what we're gonna do is come out and assess every situation, like we do a handicap sign, and, uh, we'll make sure we have your address and name to provide that to the hauler, so they know exactly which cans to go find, but there will be no more alley pickup. Also, when talking with Athens Hocking today, they, uh, they really liked the idea of still having the recycle dumpsters like we have out here. Uh, I told them we were very adamant about not having them here. So, one of the things that we talked through that it could be a potential option, would be putting those down at Polly inside of the cameras that we now have down there to monitor that situation. They, uh, Athens Hocking told me that they plan on changing the route, and they're gonna be in town four days a week as is, and their plan is to maintain it, the cleanliness around it and not city employees, and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, no harm, no foul, they'll just take it away. So, if council's okay with that, you know, um, after Runkey moves out, because Runkey's gonna be using Polly Field as a staging area to pull their stuff out, after that's done, we'll leave, uh, recycled bins down at Polly, we'll make sure that, you know, the, uh, the, uh, dumpsters, you know, let them know that they're being surveill, you know, surveillance and all that other good stuff. So, if there's no issues with that, that's.
Yeah, I would see was, is two, one, that we pass an ordinance saying what you can put in those dumpsters, and attach a fine to it if you put something else in the dumpster like trash.
Okay.
And secondly, that the Athens Hocking agree to pull them after, uh, before any flood hits.
So, I, we talked specifically about the flood.
Yeah.
And with them being in town four days a week, they, they were not worried about that at all, in fact, the operations guys in Nelsonville residents, so they feel very confident that if flood came to that level, cause we definitely talked about the buoyancy, cause we inherited on our property.
Even if we have cameras, we need a law that says if you dump trash in there, you're committing a violation, and you can be, you know, cited, because the problem, the biggest problem we had out here was people bringing trash from all over the world and dumping it in there. So, if we got it, if we got them on cameras, and we have a sign up that's, that advises what the ordinance number is, and what you can actually put in those dumpsters, then there can be enforcement action if somebody violates those rules. And I, I think that's, we need to, we need to bring that ordinance in to do that too.
Got it, couple points, um, tell me if I'm right on this. The, one of the benefits of the city doing the billing is everybody will have trash service. It won't be, you get to opt in for trash or opt out for trash, like, you have a home, you have water or sewer, whatever, you have trash, correct?
That's the end game right now, so the current discussion in utility committee is having landlords put the water in their name or not. Currently, trash is required to be in the landlord's name, and water can be in anybody's name. So if water and trash are both required to be in the landlord's name, it would be a utility bill, if you will, at that point, where there's no opting out anymore, it's, you have water and trash, it's all one service provided.
Okay. Second point is, one of the, the main goals of going with Athens Hocking is the fact that they're giving curbside recycling to every resident at, at no cost. My only hesitation about, again, putting dumpsters at Polly is that people aren't going to embrace being sustainable and recycling at home, and just taking stuff down there, and again, it becomes a, a trash dump, and not a recycling bin. So I think that that's something that we need to be very conscious and very clear about, that you can recycle at home, you know, water bottles, cardboard and all that, and it's just maybe bigger boxes broken down, not filling up the dumpster with boxes that are not broken down, or things in those kind of universal recycling containers.
I think that's what, uh, Mr. Smith was alluding to as far as with the ordinance.
Yeah.
Being very specific. Uh, I also know, because I'm, I, I do not like these dumpsters at all out here.
They look horrible coming out of city.
Absolutely, um, and they were very understanding of that, and, uh, that's why they suggested maybe doing a trial period, to give them a chance to show that they can keep the area clean and so forth, and then if it doesn't work, we can pull the plug at any time.
Whereabouts?
So for the camera, for the sake of the cameras, the best place to put it would be, uh, not up, so when you go in the, uh, the basketball court with the fence all the way around it, if you put them up against that fence, they're gonna get captured from the back, so you'll see the faces of everybody putting stuff in the dumpster, and then they'll also get captured by the flagpole camera that has everybody coming in, and you also have that within the vision. Uh, we can turn that camera a little bit, so it catches over there, so.
Not like where they put the hand, handicap, ground?
No. No, no, this would be, uh, so if you come into Polly, it'd be immediate right-hand turn, and then there's the concrete wall straight ahead, but there's the fence right here to the right, just before you get to the concrete wall, right there in front of that fence.
Pretty close to where the, the existing dumpster is now.
Where the track, or where the bicycle rack was it got to?
I think.
Um, your, uh, your comment about the IT, there's almost certainly gonna be more COVID money coming whenever, but if you spend it before you make the application, they're gonna give it to you, so you're probably gonna be better off once you have to, spend that money right now the way you did.
We have about thirty complaints right now for the sound.
Yeah.
Well, we're just gonna keep these on and.
I already turned those off because they created static in there, and nobody could hear anything at the beginning of the meeting.
So all I can tell you is that I know they won't let, go back and re-burn it, but, probably gonna be quite a bit.
Within, within a, a couple of weeks, I think, probably, right?
At least.
I think so, yeah, I think we should just probably get together and do something.
So it shouldn't be too much.
Um, so, back to the trash real quick and to, um, Elizabeth's point. I, I think that, um, it, I agree with her, I don't, I don't think we should have dumpsters at all, but, um, the question I have is if we, I would prefer to work on the curbside and try, you know, try that, but can we go to Athens Hocking if we need to get a dumpster if they allow, but will they bring that dumpster later, maybe for us?
I, I don't know that there's any time limits per se, that, so.
So the only good thing about the dumpster down at Polly, that does still do your business, businesses that have probably a little bit more recycling than, than most, can still do drop off there, but you know that there's some businesses that drop off recycling out here at feet.
Yeah, I think we should go with the dumpsters, we can always get rid of them later, right?
Yeah, if it doesn't work out, we can only just tell, tell them, we're done.
They're not, or they're gonna charge us for it.
He did not indicate that.
We're not gonna be paying for them out of the proprietary fund, cause if we're gonna have to pay for them, I'm giving that.
No, no, he, when I talked to Bruce, uh, he already popped off, I believe, the call, but, uh, there was no charge at all included that I, outside of what we're already paying.
Yeah, can you, can you have a discussion with Bruce, because he said, he mentioned going around each of the businesses independently and, and, uh, speaking with them regarding their recycling needs, um, and just see how that conversation goes, because I think that, I think you'll, you'll find that you'll have some businesses that'll probably, uh, use their services probably at their business, because it doesn't seem like, it sounds like they're gonna be working with business, so it's not like it's gonna be cost prohibitive to do it, um, probably no more than just driving Polly back with a boat of recyclables, so.
But it's just a benefit to try, we can always take the way.
But I, I agree with, um, Elizabeth on this point, though, it's habit forming, so, you know, if, if you have the ability to do it at your curve now, you're not, you're not, you're not ena, you're enabling them, you're not in, you're not allowing them to, you know, learn that new behavior of doing it via the curb. And, the other thing is, I don't think it's gonna deter outside, uh, Nelsonville folks from coming in and dumping, you know, so, uh, I think that's gonna be a significant problem.
I personally would rather that we save it and maybe two or three times a year, bring those dumpsters into Polly for larger recycling items.
We had issues.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying, right?
So, that is people saving garbage, yeah.
So, but my big thing is, I want, I want people to become, with the, with the ability of to have, you know, at no cost, curbside recycling, for people to get into the habit of recycling.
Right.
And again, I do feel strongly, as Corey said, that if we continue to put these dumpsters out, they, they just have an out to not do it, and, and then again, what's happened here, and I mean, I pulled in the parking lot and seen people doing this, they fill it with garbage, um, and it just becomes an issue, because then Athens Hocking can't take that stuff to be recycled, because they, they're not gonna, they can't store it all, it just goes straight to the dump.
But what's it gonna hurt to try it just for a month or two?
I guess.
Well, but if, if their residents are gonna be the ones utilizing it, they're gonna be getting it out and it's gonna be right at their curb, so which one?
Well, you're gonna see when.
Well, if it's empty, then we obviously won't need it.
When, when baseball, softball starts up down there.
I guarantee you, you put a dumpster there, it'll be full.
Well, recyclables, that's good.
And if it's not for.
Then we'll get rid of it.
I would, I would put it in and, and give it a trial period while it's still cold, because before baseball, before baseball and softball season hopefully starts this year, hopefully, we wouldn't want, uh, trash fit down there with the kids to be.
Right. No, but also, I guess the thinking of the bottles and the, and all that stuff in there.
Maybe they won't throw it all over.
Right, there you go.
They produce a lot of bottles.
Yeah.
A lot of bottles, probably, right?
Yeah, exactly.
So. Okay, so I'll finish, and then I'll, actually, I just wanna circle back then, so, the speaker, are you guys comfortable holding off on spending the money for now, so?
Yeah, if we're, our next meeting's in a couple of weeks, then, you know.
We got, what, two more this week, or three more this week?
Well, uh.
Well, you're not gonna get it by tomorrow, though, right?
You could probably get it by Thursday.
I mean, yeah.
I don't know, I don't know how many of these actually, I think the committee may do it now, virtually, so.
How many dumpsters will be down there, too?
Uh, he was just gonna stick with the four we have now. There's a regular dumpster down there now.
Yeah.
That's a lot. I'd say two, yeah.
But, yeah, the other confusing part of it is that there's a regular dumpster down there as well, so.
Can we get a sign that says this dumpster's for trash, that's generated at the park only, and then another sign that says what you can put in the, what you can put in the recycling?
I, I'm sure we could even have them doing different colors for that matter.
Right.
Right.
I think that's probably possible.
Also, there was a question earlier, uh, a gentleman asked, is, can we check and see if there is an option for lockable dumpsters for people with commercial?
Yeah, I saw that, I was gonna have Bruce refer back to these comments as well, so he can answer those individually.
All right, thank you.
You bet, so the last thing I'll wrap up with is, I, I just wanna give a report to everybody on the tree removal and stuff, so, we took the list given by the tree commission, uh, but there was five trees on there for us to remove, is the city, four of the five have been removed. Uh, in addition to that, uh, oh, sorry, one more, the last one's getting removed tomorrow. Also, the guys have gone around and taken out twelve stumps with the stump grinder that we rented, so the only stumps they have left are the trees they cut down today and the one they're gonna cut down tomorrow, and then the stump grinder goes back the end of this week. Um, it's just a, I guess it's an insignificant but significant accomplishment, getting, a lot of people are very happy to have those stumps out of their front yard.
I like started off.
It, it does. Um, I just wanna give an update on the salt, uh, all, most municipalities are in the same boat we are, we have a little bit left, we're not completely out, but, uh, we are definitely low, and all the suppliers are out. Yeah. So, uh, it's a problem, and, uh, we have already started diluting during the last little bit, we were doing with grits, adding it in with the salt, which creates a mess, but luckily we have a sweeper, so, we're dealing with it as it comes, I just want everybody to know, in case we get hammered again, it's no surprise.
You're probably correct.
You bet. Um. That's all I have for everyone, um, all, except for, don't wanna talk too much about trash, but we'll be doing lots of advertising of the new policies, you know, getting out on the curb, not in the alleys anymore, and then of course, uh, hammering the streets with, you need a container, roller, or whatever the case may be for everyone. So a lot of that will start going out this week. That's all I have.
That's good, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have anything else? Scott, you done?
Yes, sir.
All right, um, we are to the good of the order. And if you would like to start, I would like to start to, um, Justin.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'll keep you free, but.
All right.
I was happy to be ahead of Carla. No, I just wanted to say thanks to everybody in the city who's, uh, made, made our strides forward, uh, Chief Barber, Chief Bitch, Scott, Jason, Taylor, Mike, everybody, uh, our, our city's on the right path, and, uh, you guys are the drivers, so, thank you very much. Express my appreciation.
Ms. Jen?
Um, actually. I, I mean, I again just wanna thank the city, I know we talk about this a lot, um, the crews have been working really hard, it's, it's nice that when we have these snowfalls and ice storms, um, that our streets look great.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and are drivable, you know, in the morning, um, I've seen lots of, of positive comments about that, I've experienced it on my own street, so, just, I guess, um, for those people that do snow dances, it's kind of stock, because words got say, we're running out of salt, so, we need spring to come.
All right. Hey, let's go down to Athens and see if we can go get some of theirs, and they're just as bad as we are.
Mr. Smith?
I wanna, uh, thank Athens Hocking, I've been on the utility committee since I've been on council, and this is the first time ever we've had a new contract where the prices went down. And, I think that's something to be, to be, and not only has the price went down, we've added curbside recycling free of charge.
And I think that's something to be, to be, and not only has the price went down, we've added curbside recycling for your charge. And I think that's, that's something to be proud of, and I don't see any, very many prices go down, going down, uh, anywhere in the world right now, so I, I just wanted to thank all the bidders that bid on that, uh, Rumpkey's been, done a great job while they've been here, I wanna thank them for, for being our hauler. And the other company that bid, I wanna thank them for bidding, we, we appreciate, we appreciate having everybody bid, and that's all I got.
Mr. Taylor?
Well, yeah, I think that says it well, I think, the trash haulers, um, and I've noticed with the, uh, the root streets as well, they've been nice and clean, and I've noticed some potholes arriving, so I can't wait to use, they have that new, uh, hot box to be used in the city, so that'll be exciting to see that out.
And asphalt grinder.
And the asphalt grinder, so I'm very excited for that to start occurring, and, uh, and see those improvements, so, thank you.
I'd also like to thank, uh, Athens Hocking for their great bid that they gave the city in a partnership. I'd also like to thank Jason Cullen for his outstanding, uh, direction on keeping our streets clean, uh, with snow removal. I was up in Columbus on Sunday, driving some of the streets, and, you know, should've started with yourself, buddy. You know, some, the streets up there were just horrible, it, it, it was almost like we had our first snow and we didn't plow. But, uh, so our streets are golden compared to the big cities. So thanks, Jason and the street department for your continued efforts in plowing.
I'm good.
Um, yeah, I would like to definitely thank the street department and utilities departments for, uh, the continued efforts during unholy snow that we've been having here lately, um, and the great weather with ice and everything else, uh, to echo, to repeat kind of what Dan said, we were in Columbus and it, it's just, I knew the roads were atrocious, um, it was, it was absolutely, uh, amazing. You know, they, they looked like they kind of scraped a little bit and then just said, we're done. So, uh, nothing like our streets, at all, nothing, so I'd just like to thank them for all their hard work.
Mr. Grant?
Um, I'd just like to say once again that please support local business. If we ever get through this curbing thing, it sounds like we have some new businesses coming in that are really gonna improve Nelsonville and bring a lot of people to town, so please support your local business.
It still was up here.
Order local share?
Yeah.
We're on that.
Let's see. Oh.
Okay, um, there is a, yeah, motion should be made to approve the decision. We have a decision of Nelsonville Council concerning hearing on.
Point of order. Point of order.
Can I finish? Um, so, um, and the proof of decision, and if seconded the decision is supposed to be read. So, a motion to approve?
Point of order before the motion is made.
No. Go ahead.
A second.
Okay, so now it can be read, well, you can, you can, no, I can comment, please, okay, go ahead.
Because we were not given the opportunity to cross or challenge any veracity or bias of the witnesses appearing with adverse testimony against Mr. Smith, because that testimony was not taken under oath, and because we were not given even the opportunity to proffer rebuttal testimony, because we did not have those statements in advance, I move to reopen the record as to additional evidence on Mr. Smith's behalf regarding rebuttal to the testimony that was offered adversely against him by those witnesses. Overruled.
So, here we go, so we'll read it.
Okay, decision of Nelsonville City.
Point of order. This is a hearing to accept evidence.
No, that was last week, that was Friday. Records.
The hearing.
Records closed. Closed at this point.
You did not close the record on Friday. You adjourned, you adjourned.
It tickled, but the record is closed, they're waiting for the decision, you were told there to be a decision come Monday.
Okay.
Okay, told there to be a decision. Out of order?
Decision of Nelsonville City Council concerning hearing whether Greg Smith meets the charter requirements to remain a councilperson. This matter came in for, on hearing on Friday nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one, in Nelsonville City Council chambers at seven P M. Present in person were council members Cory Taylor, Dan Sherman, Tony Dunphy, Carla Grant, and Justin Booth. Elizabeth Jones was present via video conference. Respondent councilperson Greg Smith was a present, was present with his attorney, Dan Close. Attorney Dan Close indicated that he would be speaking for Greg Smith. Attorney Dan Close raised an issue claiming the hearing was not adequately noticed. The motion was overruled. Councilman Greg Smith, by email on February twelfth, twenty-twenty-one, made a public records demand for information on the hearing on February nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Charter section eleven point zero eight B only require ten days' notice, and council gave Greg Smith ten days' notice, or gave, gave Greg Smith notice on February eighth, twenty-twenty-one. In addition, Greg Smith and his attorney took part in the hearing and presented evidence. Councilperson Greg Smith is charged with failure to meet the charter requirement of charter section eleven point zero eight B, section one, failure to possess or maintain the qualifications of the office prescribed by this charter, and that he does not meet charter section four point zero two requirement, that he is continuously a resident and qualified elector. The issue is not whether Greg Smith is a qualified elector of the Nelsonville pursuant to Ohio Revise Code thirty-five zero, thirty-five oh-three point zero-two, he is a qualified elector, he is a qualified elector pursuant to state law. The charter adds an additional qualification in section four point zero-two that he must be continuously a resident. The issue is whether, under the charter provision, section four point zero-two, Greg Smith is a continuant resident of Nelsonville. This is administrative hearing, not a criminal hearing.
So we go down to the bottom here.
After the evidence was completed, Attorney Dan Close moved to strike the council's statements of witnesses as contained derogatory comments. This motion was overruled. This motion was not appropriate because it was not made when the statements were introduced. And Greg Smith did not testify to even challenge the statements, in addition, these statements were relevant. It is the decision of Nelsonville City Council that there's, that there's sufficient, unrefuted evidence that Greg Smith, that Greg Smith resides at two thirty-eight Adams Street, Nelsonville, Ohio, has his voting address with his wife, but that he does not reside there continuously, also residing at six oh-eight Elm Street, Belgrade, Ohio, with his self-identified girlfriend, Beth Tyson, and part-time with his self-identified girlfriend, Beth Tyson, at sixteen ninety Clark Hill Road, Waterford, Ohio. It is Nelsonville City Council's decision pursuant to Nelsonville City Charter section four point zero-two that councilperson Greg Smith does, does not meet the requirement of being a continuous resident of Nelsonville, Ohio, and that pursuant to Nelsonville City Charter provision eleven point zero eight B, one, that he fails to possess or maintain the qualifications of the office prescribed by this charter. As such, he is removed from the office of Nelsonville City Councilperson, subject to review by the Athens County Board of Elections. He is suspended from acting as Nelsonville City Councilperson until, at, until the Athens County Board of Elections makes a decision on this matter.
We're to know?
Second.
Point of order?
Not appropriate, huh?
Uh, Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant? So for clarification, let's send it on to the Board of Elections, correct? Yes. Booth?
Yes.
Jones? Yes. Mr. Smith? This, uh, this, uh, yeah.
Yes.
Question of the council, please?
Do we need any?
Steven? Steven? Question of the council, please?
If we don't, uh, need any exact, I'm trying to do it.
Excuse me, question of the council, please?
Yes.
Will this decision be in writing?
It isn't writing, it isn't writing. Sir, forgive me. With these. There's a motion on the floor. Second.
Um, Ms. Grant? Nelsonville adjourned, yes. Booth?
Yes.
Jones? Yes. Mr. Smith? Mr. Taylor?
Yep. Yes. Yes.